Okay, we'll call our meeting into order. Madam Court, you take roll call, please.
All right, Mr. Combs, Ms. Nelson.
Present.
Ms. Riclu.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Washington.
Here.
Mr. West.
Here.
And Mr. Braun.
Present.
Eight council members present.
All righty, at this time Pastor Williamson will be here to lead us in indication.
Let us pray together. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for such a beautiful day as this, and I'm reminded that three weeks ago tonight, we were in session, and since then, you've really blessed our community. The ballparks are full of young people playing ball. The Legends Complex has a big crowd there tonight. The infrastructure work continues across our city, and we've had the street fair and a Fourth of July celebration that went off without a hitch. I want to thank you, Lord, for everyone that led in these efforts and continues to, and for our police officers and firefighters and first responders who helped us through those busy times. I am truly grateful for them, and for the citizenry, the public that we serve. The cooperation was amazing, and I just thank you, Lord, that in a community like this, working together lets everyone prosper and enjoy each other. For this session tonight, Lord, I pray that you'll be in the midst of it. For those that are sharing from the community and beyond, I'm grateful for their presence. That makes us all better. And I pray for any discussions or decisions that are made, that they be pleasing to you. I lift up those within our city family, no matter who they are or what need they have, that you'll continue to minister to those who have physical needs and those that are bearing the burden of grief and loss. We thank you for your strength and for your help. Continue to bless our nation and those who serve us in uniform, and keep our nation both safe and free. We pray all this with the deepest gratitude, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Pray it, sir.
And before we go on, I will make a quick announcement. We are having technical difficulties with our video recording, so the broadcast will not air live on our normal streaming channel, but it will be on Facebook Live, or we're going to do our best. We're making extra efforts to try to get this meeting broadcasted live. So at the very least, it is being recorded, and we will broadcast it later on our normal website. So it'll be there. All right, this time we do have recognition now of some outgoing Parks and Rec Board members. Been here a long time. One at a time, I'll present these down front. Craig Sneeden, sixteen years. Wow.
I've served on this board for a while myself. It takes dedication to do it even a year, but sixteen years, that's a great accomplishment and a great service. Whereas Craig Sneeden served as a member of the City of Fulton Parks and Recreation Board for a period of sixteen years, beginning July 12, 2005, and ending June 30, 2021. Whereas Craig's contributions to the Parks and Rec Board are noteworthy and deserving of recognition. These contributions and Craig's service stand as a testament to the community that our city's success is due in great part to the volunteers who become and remain actively involved in their local government. And now therefore, I allow Colonel Mayor of the City of Fulton, on behalf of City Council and the citizens of our community, extend our sincere appreciation to Craig Sneeden for his sixteen years of loyal service, and wish him many years of success and happiness in the coming years. In witness whereof, I have here in two separate hands the official seal of the City of Fulton Reserve, this thirteenth day of July, 2021.
Thank you, Craig.
All right, next up is Royce Anderson. Thank you, Royce. Twenty-five years. Wow. What are you gonna do with yourself? We appreciate you, Royce. Whereas Royce Anderson served as a member of the City of Fulton Parks and Rec Board for a period of twenty-five years, beginning June 25, 1996, and ending June 30, 2021. Whereas Royce's contributions to the Parks and Recreation Board are noteworthy and deserving of recognition. These contributions and Royce's service stand as a testament to the community that our city's success is due in great part to the volunteers who become and remain actively involved in their local government. And now therefore, I allow Colonel Mayor of the City of Fulton, on behalf of City Council and the citizens of our community, extend our sincere appreciation to Royce Anderson for his twenty-five years of loyal service, and wish him many years of success and happiness in the coming years. In witness whereof, I have here in two separate hands the official seal of the City of Fulton
Your gold box will be in the mail, guys. Okay. Next up, we have comments from visitors. Anyone wishing to address the council, step to the podium and give us your name and address. Keep your comments to five minutes or less. And seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Council members may choose to remove an item for discussion prior to the approval of the consent agenda. Tonight, we have the approval of an event request from Lynn Dykamp for the annual Callaway County Crop Hunger Walk on Sunday, October 10, at 1:30. The event request has been reviewed and approved by Chief Myers. No police assistance will be needed, or has been requested. Next, we have the appointment of Carl Brower to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term, the appointment of Larry Doyle Jr. to the Park Board for a three-year term, and the appointment of Brenda Goff to the Park Board for a three-year term. And I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda is written.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All righty. Next up, we have unfinished business. Our gas rate increased discussion. The U-Board met again on this regards to the repayment requirement, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Johnson.
The utility board met at their regular meeting. It was brought up and it was discussed extensively again, and they made a recommendation that we go ahead with the proposed rate increase that we talked about last time. Hand those out that direction. Take my hand down. This is just a little bit of... And what they basically said, though, was that we should do the nickel in August and a dime, another nickel in April, with an annual evaluation and a monitoring of how the funds are coming in. Jeff Stone sent an email earlier today questioning the exact amount, because part of the loan is for electricity. So I did look at that, and it appears that we could, instead of doing a nickel and a dime, based on Jeff's suggestion, we could do four and a half cents. The electric side portion of that would be about a half a penny. And then we would let the... If we figure out the... Because I think the electric side is only thirty... Seventeen thousand dollars a year? No, thirty-four thousand dollars a year. I mean, I think we'd be able to find that someplace in the electric fund. So instead of the nickel and the dime, I believe we could do four and a half cents and then another nickel. So give up a half cent on each of the two proposals. It is... There was a phrase and a clause in the loan application documents that the City Council is responsible to identify a revenue stream to satisfy to pay this loan back. That was another thing that the utility board talked about.
I guess my question is, the original plan was to repay it with the existing loan, right?
Yes.
Wouldn't that be the revenue stream to repay the loan?
Well, it's not a... I don't know if that's considered to be a dedicated revenue stream, but at the end of the five years of paying back the loan, using the loan proceeds, the city would be in no better position than we are now. We would be paying that.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
I think Darryl's got something he wants to throw around here, too. Come on up. About what we've been doing for the past three or four days.
I think probably everybody's aware that there was some major storms rolled through Missouri Friday night. We did get a plea for help about midnight Friday night, early Saturday morning, and we sent a three-person crew to Perry, Missouri. Population about seven hundred. Besides us, Columbia, Hannibal, Higginsville, Paris, and Vandalia responded to Perry. Our guys came back last night, and we had Ryan Witt, Austin, Will Height, and Nahom Retta. Nahom and Austin are three-year apprentices, and Ryan was a journey lineman. So we took bucket truck and a line truck up there, and they started Saturday morning. So as soon as the storm, like we normally do, we wait until the storm passed through Fulton. And then at first, like, them guys started getting ready and heading up there to Perry. So I want to thank them for volunteering, because we never forced anybody to go. We asked for volunteers, and this town has great employees, and we always get volunteers. And they answered the call for help at Perry, so I want to thank them in particular for going to Perry.
Absolutely. Please pass along our thanks, too.
Yes. You can look at some pictures from that area. The National Weather Service said it was ninety mile an hour wind. And as you look at Perry, it was hurt pretty bad. And even the farming community around Perry, the cornfields are basically laid on their side. And there was a marina at the lake that was damaged. Blackjack, I think it's all a marina up there on Cannon Lake, but anyway, they took damage. So, you know, that could have happened here. It didn't. We're always willing to go help people. And the two guys that were third-year apprentices, I'm sure they learned a lot, working up there from Saturday till Monday night. So as I said, hats off to them for doing that.
And no injuries or anything like that, right?
Not that I've heard of. I think when they left Monday, there was about half the town back on. And if it's like storms that we've worked in the past, you get to a point where you're waiting on electricians, you know, to repair services, and inspectors like dentists to come by and say, hey, it's good to hook back up. But I think when they left, about half the town was back on.
Good.
Darryl, it's good to serve whenever you can get an opportunity, especially to volunteer, especially in the person they need. Do you have an idea of what's the estimated cost of those guys going out, just roughly?
We haven't figured the cost yet.
Okay.
We always, you know, we figure they'll be probably reimbursed by FEMA. So we work with Kathy downstairs, and we get the current FEMA rates for the trucks and equipment, and we try not to charge any more for that equipment than FEMA's going to reimburse Perry for.
Awesome.
And then, you know, our guys are paid for them when they roll out the gate till they get back.
Okay.
And we also pay their living expenses, right? The hotel, food, all that sort of thing, right? The guys bring their receipts back, and that's in the bill to the city.
So how many towns we're helping Perry?
Of...
Counting us?
Six.
So... Kind of one reason we're talking about this right now, the discussion of the rate increase, you know, if that wind would have been seventy miles south of where it went through, we might be sitting around having a totally different council meeting tonight, thanking multiple towns for assisting us in getting the power lines back up and the electricity going again. It could happen any night.
Then I want to point out that your employees stepped up.
Yeah. Two years ago, it was in Jefferson City, which is even closer. So... Thank you, Darryl.
So we're tasked, guys and gals, to figure out how we're gonna... What we're gonna do here. We're trying to be fiscally responsible and also be kind to our citizens and not gouge them for more money right now, too. I don't know. What do y'all think?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I... And maybe I'm wrong. I don't have the exact date and the time and who asked the question, but when we were looking at the loan like we did, I seem to remember that question exactly being asked about the rate, a stream of revenue. And the answer that I seem to remember was, no, we do not have to do a rate increase for that stream of revenue. Now, I could probably go back and find it, or if somebody doesn't... Can correct me, I'm happy to be corrected.
I'm quite sure that could have been said, and it's true. I mean, it doesn't have to be done that way, and it doesn't have to be rebuilt at all.
Or maybe there was an additional clause on that, but there's... You don't have to raise rates that night or immediately, because we have an opportunity to study it and analyze it and figure things out exactly. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor. Go back in history. We've always tried, on the time that I've been on the council, prior to now, tried to keep the rates for the citizens as low as possible. We bought gas ahead of time and all that sort of thing in order to maintain those rates low. And, you know, when I saw the budget, what it was supposed to be this year, I guess I'd never paid close enough attention to realize we were only having a surplus of twelve thousand dollars for the year. And that probably was not fiscally responsible on our part in the past. And unfortunately, we've spent... And I've been hearing from some, at least one constituent in particular, you know, we spent, took five million dollars, or nearly five million dollars, out of the reserves to supplement a rec plex. And then we had this big... The perfect storm has happened to us now, and we've depleted most of the rest of our reserves with this, with the gas that happened in, was it February? So now we're gonna have to... Unfortunately, I think we're gonna have to bite the bullet, and maybe we don't need to do the nickel or the four and a half cent. I didn't really follow all that, Mr. Johnson, that you were talking about there. But, you know, we... I, in my opinion, we need to figure out a way that the Parks and Rec is gonna pay that five million dollars back, as an example. And it's not gonna happen overnight either. So, you know, it's gonna have to be... Many, many things are gonna have to go together, but I think our, you know, our history was we were keeping the rates low, and that may have been the wrong thing to do back in the past. It's easy to have 20/20 hindsight, and I realize that now. But, you know, I don't really... I didn't get back on the council just to turn around and start raising rates on everything, but we had to be responsible and do what we have to. And there was four hundred thousand... Correct me on my numbers here. Four hundred thousand dollars, we're not doing on the streets this year because of this. Another hundred and fifty thousand was cut from the capital for the utilities. I don't know what part of utilities. Is that the wrong number this year? That we're going to have to come up with that money somehow in the future. I mean, we can't do that every year, and our streets are gonna need attention and many other things. So it's... We're gonna have to get responsible and bite the bullet, but we need to keep our constituents and our utility customers in mind on how they're going to be able to pay for this as well. That's the big concern. But we're... I mean, yeah, we can pay this money back with the loan we have. We could pay it today, but then we'd bank back to where we start with, and we don't have any money to fall back onto if something doesn't happen, if we don't get it. Okay, I'm done.
Yeah, it's tough, no matter what we do. It's gonna be a tough call.
Yeah.
I know a lot of the cities, fortunately, we weren't one of them, that just directly billed out that huge bill, gas bill, to their customers that next week afterwards. Luckily, we didn't have to do that, but...
And I did a little research on the internet today in anticipation of this discussion, and that handout I handed out to you a little bit ago, it's got some averages, and I'm gonna plead complete ignorance on the back page now, and I don't know if that's Missouri or national or what it is. I don't know. I don't remember.
It says national.
On the first couple pages, a national. On the first two pages, it's average state natural gas prices in every state for from November of '20 to April of '21. And I thought it was very fortunate to be able to find April of '21, because that's going to include any possible modifications that some of the utility companies have made as a result of the February crisis. If you look down there at the bottom, you know, Fulton, Missouri is coming in at about ten ninety-eight, and eight ninety-six, and eight fifteen. Right now, even with the twelve cents we added on for the lawsuit, we're at eighty-seven and a half cents. So you can see, looking across that row, we are pretty cost competitive. If we add the four and a half cents, it's gonna take us to ninety-two... Nine... This is in terms, so I'm gonna try to switch my conversation to decal terms to make the comparison here. Right now, we're at eight dollars and seventy-five cents. If we add the four and a half cents, four and a half, yeah, it'll go to nine dollars and twenty cents, and then it would go to nine dollars and seventy cents with the nine and a half cents added on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I was taught a phrase growing up that I have carried with me, and it's, "I'm not gonna fear fear. I'm gonna fear what I know. I'm gonna fear what is assumed. I'm gonna fear what people with an educated guess can give me, but I'm not gonna fear fear." And I think that's what we're doing right now. We are afraid of what might or might not happen. And I think we have the luxury of time in front of us. We have received a zero-interest loan from the state government. We have the ability. We will have one loan payment due between now and April of next year, is all we'll have due. We will be able to pay that loan payment with the money from the loan. That will get us through next February, which is what we fear, is what's gonna happen again next February, if it's gonna happen like it did this last year. And I think we have time to figure out what it is we truly need to worry about, how we need to plan for, one, the repayment of the loan, and, two, how we want to rebuild our reserve. We were very fortunate to have a five million dollar reserve, that we spent 3.2 million in four days. We were extremely fortunate. But I think we were also fiscally responsible, because we had held that money in a bank account for fifteen years that we never had to use. So I don't believe we need to raise rates to generate a revenue stream to pay back a loan when we're treating it like new information, that all of a sudden now, oh, wait, we have to have a rate increase because there's a line in the loan payment that we haven't known until today. And we've got nine months to figure out what it is that we need to worry about. If we can get through next February and March, and we don't have another once-in-a-lifetime event occur, then we can figure out... We'll have plenty of time for the U-Board to discuss how we want to rebuild our reserve, what we want to do with it, and whether or not we actually need a rate increase because we're not covering the cost of our utility, not because we fear the unknown. So I'd like to table the discussion until next year.
I'm not going from fear. I'm saying that we need to replenish our reserves. If we didn't have that loan, we just had the luxury of having that loan, because we were proactive, and our city staff brought it to our attention. We jumped right on it, and we won it. And we got it.
And now we have time to figure out what it is we want to do. We don't have to react right now.
I also don't think it's just about February. I think it's about the big picture. It's just like Darryl said, that could have easily been us, and then what would we have done if we didn't have that? You know? It could be any time. It's not just February. It's any emergency that might arise. I mean, we saw it in Joplin. We've seen it here now. You know, maybe not as significant, but that could be us at any point. It's not fear, it's being prepared.
And this one was widespread. It wasn't just Perry, or Jeff City, or Joplin, or Fulton.
And the problem might not hit us next February. It might not... It might hit us in December of 2022, or in February of 2022. You don't know. So it's not a question of being fearful, it's a question of being prepared. Would we rather sit here and do absolutely nothing, and then come this fall or next February, tell, hey, customers, I'm sorry, but you're gonna get a five hundred dollar gas bill, because we don't have the reserves to pay for whatever event happened? And we'll never be able to figure out what this event is, because it'll always be something we don't think it's gonna happen. We... Nobody imagined that this cold spell would hit Texas as bad as it did.
Definition of an emergency.
Yeah.
It's not something you can be prepared for, because you don't expect it to happen.
Nobody envisioned Perry getting hit with ninety mile an hour winds, or Joplin getting hit with a tornado, or Jeff City getting hit with a tornado.
So but I think, I believe there's some serious difference to a tornado, a natural disaster from that perspective than we saw with the cold snap this year. Darryl mentioned FEMA stepping in. When FEMA gets involved, other reimbursement plans come into place. No one decided that the City of Fulton or anybody else in the United States needed to be reimbursed from anybody. Just pay it.
Right.
All the cities, all the counties, just pay the bill.
Right.
That's not acceptable. I mean, so I do think it's different from some natural disaster perspectives. If you have a hurricane, FEMA comes in. If you have different situations, different things happen. This one, no one came to the rescue of anybody. The ones that benefited from it, the gas companies. That's who benefited from it.
Right, but we have to look at us. We didn't anticipate that event. And yeah, the tornado might come through Fulton, and we'll wait for FEMA to reverse it, and it might be two years, but in the meantime, we've gotta rebuild our infrastructure. So but we don't know what event can happen that'll impact our citizens.
You're right. I don't disagree that we don't know.
And I would rather see us do a little bit right now, and then try to jump through hoops and do a lot more next year, or the year after, or whatever. I'm on the utility board, and the comment was, let the utility board look at it. They've looked at it for months, and their first determination was rebuild it immediately. Well, that... No, that's not gonna happen.
That's not feasible.
Yeah, that's not... That wasn't feasible. And in discussions with the utility board, they came up with a reasonable plan of the five cents. If we wanna modify it down to four and a half, or four and a half... If we wanna modify it down to four and a half or four cents, that's probably reasonable too. But, the expectation is we have some sort of reserves in five years that we can handle an emergency. Whatever that emergency might be, and it might happen next year, it might happen three years from now.
Tomorrow.
So, so, let's, let's forget about the catastrophic event like we had for just a second. Is it the right thing, is it the right thing to do to operate with a margin of only twelve thousand dollars on something? I don't even know what our annual gas bill is, what is our annual gas revenues and expenses? Kathy's not here, and I don't have it with me.
Our budget is two point seven million?
That's not very much.
That's, that's purchased gas, that's not the budget.
Okay.
Well, that's, yeah, we, we spent like three point something or.
I think it's about five million.
So, is twelve thousand dollars the right kind of number to even have on something that large?
But that's a, an overall budget problem.
I agree, I agree, but that's where I'm looking at it from, is like, maybe we've not been looking at this in the right way in the past, because we've always tried to keep the rates down for the customers and the, and the citizens. Seemed like the right thing to do at the time, and I was right there along with everyone else.
So we increased, we increased when the transportation costs skyrocketed, because we were gonna go from, help me out, Bill, up to almost a million dollars.
Yeah.
We increased to cover that, and, and no issues whatsoever. And we're still waiting for those results, okay? Will we ever, my, my mindset is, we probably won't ever see that back.
Yeah.
We won't see it back down to where it was. I could be wrong, but we increased for that. And, and I just, you know, we, we talk about all the things that have happened. We also know that there's two point three million dollars that sometime in the next two years, and I understand we haven't got it yet, but the federal government has allocated money, the state has said this is what we're getting, and we don't have a clear pattern on how that money can be spent and money moved to put back into reserves. So is that, is that a potential where money can come from? I, I certainly think it is, and I think over the next two years, that money will come back to, and we will get that money.
Are you, are you talking the COVID?
The COVID money.
If it's anything like the, what the county, if the rules that a county is living by, if you don't spend it, you lose it.
Well, that's not, that, that, I do not believe that's the case on this one.
I'm on the, the committee for the county, if you don't spend that money, you lose it.
But this was, this was a little bit different. Bill, jump in, tell me what that money is, tell me what, what the, what the regulations on that money are, and, and how it can be spent, and whether we have to give it back, because I do not believe we have to.
I think they're still developing the rules, I have, we haven't seen the final rule. There's a, I believe on the nineteenth, there's a weather R that's gonna get us closer. State of Missouri hasn't even applied for the money yet for the communities. Right now, the, and I emailed that out to everybody, but it, it makes it clear that it's okay for water, sewer, and broadband. I've read lists from what some other towns plan on doing with it. I, and the comments that I get back there, that I read on this, we have a group, city manager group list, and some people are like, oh, that sounds fun, that sounds good. Some are like, I don't think you can do that. So I, I don't know what the rules are.
I thought it could, I thought stormwater was in there too.
Well, I think that's considered to be part of.
And, and then I heard on the news this afternoon that they're suggesting we might be able to use it to, for police protection, so it's, who knows?
So, but my point, my point is, no matter what, that's dollars that, that would not come out of a budget, potentially, that could be used for reserve money.
So you say, I'm gonna use this, this hundred thousand dollars from that fund for.
We're gonna, we're gonna do.
Whatever, and so I don't use that money that I already had allocated for that, I use that over here, is what, I understand that. It's kind of a shell game, but.
A hundred percent.
And Kathy's not here, she can't slap our hands, we can take it.
The only issue I had was the nickel. I was looking at three and a half percent, and I know, Mr. Johnson, you said four percent is something that you came up with some numbers with. Three and a half percent, I, I can, I believe that, Mike, you're right, I think we need to have something. You know, I think it's, it's important that we have something in the kitty, in case of emergency and things like that. But as, but I can understand that we don't have to do so much now, but I believe that if we can do something, we get something going, and something, some revenue in there, then if these things come to pass, that, hey, we being reimbursed, then this goes away. The increase goes away, then we can put, uh, put the money back in, whereas, you know, once we get the money from wherever resources is coming from.
I think when you're talking about the COVID money and things like that, I think that's why the utility board, you guys can correct me, and Courtney was there also, I think that's why they was asking for this to be relooked at every year, not, not just put in and forgot about. So, to come back to it and see what's changed.
The whole reserve fund repayment.
Right.
Discussion.
The whole, the whole discussion.
The rates in general.
The rates in general on it.
Oh, okay.
Now, June tenth of this year, we got orders from MISO, and we, we told the U-Board this, I don't know if this council knows it or not, because it was just June tenth. But there was an all generation alert on MISO, which is the Midwest continent, or ISO, you all heard us talk about it before. And our, our power plant in Fulton, Missouri got orders of how much to generate and when to. So, we followed MISO dispatch in June of this year. We've only done that once since I've been here, and that was in the winter a couple of years, I think it was your first year as mayor, is when we had an order, that's when ours was out of commission, wouldn't start, and we, we talked to MISO and explained why. But, uh, we got orders to run June tenth, and they sent us a schedule. So, the U-Board's also know about, knew about that, which I don't think you folks did yet. But, uh, the market is changing.
So did you run both? What do we have up there?
We ran the turbine, that's what we had, since we count the turbine in the market as capacity, they can order us to run it.
Okay.
So.
I don't think that's ever happened since.
They dispatched it starting at two o'clock to run till six o'clock, and the last hour at six o'clock, they waved it off.
In the, oh, in the afternoon?
In the afternoon.
Okay. And, and for y'all's information, it ran and, and got the number it's supposed to got to, but.
Last time, you, you were talking about a couple of years ago that this happened, that we, we weren't able to fulfill that request, and we got a big fine for it, is that right?
Right, and we talked ourselves out of a lot of the fine, because we actually had a purchase order in place to repair the unit. We just did not take it out of the market, we, we didn't go in there and check it out of the market. So it was called, and that was, that was the first time it was called in the fifteen years I'd worked here before then.
Yeah.
That's, that's the first time in MISO history where we've been called to run, so.
Can you tell us what that means, Darryl, I don't know.
That means that, that MISO was looking over the MISO footprint, which basically goes from Canada all the way down to Louisiana.
What's MISO do?
MISO is the reliability coordinator, basically, for the Midwest. Illinois, Michigan, parts of Missouri.
A little bit of Texas.
A little bit of Texas, Louisiana, Mississippi. And as they was looking at the temperatures, the day before then, they was seeing that they was short of generation.
They, they make, they, they monitor the transmission lines and the generation that's out there, and they, their job is to make sure there's enough electricity available to keep all the lights on.
This came out of the big blackout that happened in the Northeast, I think it was about this time of the year, because it seemed like it was around the All-Star game or something, but.
You know, there's, there's a number of power plants that aren't producing right now.
Amberd.
I know.
Amberd, um, and they take those things into consideration and see what, what power plants are available, and based on the temperature, they thought there was gonna be a drastic overload, a, a huge consumption. So they, so they called, they called us and said, fire 'em up, boys.
We need you.
Make, make some power, we need you.
But like, we get power from Sykeston, they knew how much power we was getting from Sykeson that day, they knew Sykeson was healthy. They knew Prairie State was healthy, and we was getting power from them, they knew we was getting hydro. And they look at all the loads, so all the draw, and then they look at all the puts, all the generation, and they seen they was short starting those hours, and.
And we were paid to run.
Yeah, they, they're wanting to keep the system reliable, they're wanting to keep it at sixty hertz, they're wanting to keep everybody's lights on, and pretty much everybody in the area ran.
That could.
That could.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's off early in the summer for that to happen, to be honest with you, usually you think about late July and August being when stuff starts getting binding. But, uh, early June is definitely early in the, in the heating season to, to get that call. So. But, I think the reason that, that Mr. Braun's talking about, of other possible monies, is why the U-Board suggested that this be revisited as time goes on.
Personally, I can go with three and a half cent.
So I, I make a motion that we look at three and a half percent on a vote?
All right, I'm gonna ask you to be really quickly, I'm gonna ask you to be a little more specific than that, so you want a three and a half percent.
Was, was it percentage or cents?
Yes.
Hold on just a moment, please, three and a half cents, and that is for August? That is for each time, what were you thinking, Mr. Washington?
I believe that we had it set up for August, uh, from, uh, from March or April to August, is that what you was looking at?
We were looking at an increase in August, and then another increase in April.
That's correct.
So you're looking for a three point five, or I'm sorry, a three and a half cent in both August, and then again in April?
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's too late to make August now, isn't it?
So there, there's a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry.
We don't have a second yet, is that, is that? Okay. Do you have a second?
And, and like Mike said, it's probably getting pretty close to implement that for August now, so.
And not that we're very mad or anyway.
I will say, for me, I mean, I'm gonna be one of, I mean, I was looking at our numbers today in our county, or our city, and there's like twenty percent of our people live in poverty. And so looking at that for me, this is just going to add more to them. Which originally, like even in February, we said we're not going to raise rates, that may have been just for that immediate time, but that kind of rolls over. And so looking at, at that percentage of our people, I would have to say, I can't, you know, vote for that. But I also agree that, you know, if, if we're not being physically responsible, or responsible, that we, we can be creative in looking for ways to have money, it just doesn't have to be this rush, hey, let's, let's just raise these rates to cover this, we've got the money. Like Jeff was saying, we can have time to actually plan out, you know, the rest of the year, we're raising other rates. Why not build that as a, as a part of the overall, like, hey, are we being responsible? Where do we need to be more responsible, where do we need more accountability for ourselves in that, rather than just saying, hey, we need to do this to cover it right now? If we're already going to miss August, we've got time to play, we've got time to, to learn and grow, and to look at where we're maybe haven't been responsible and need to be.
In the heating season, what on average would that raise somebody's bill at three point five cents?
We had that figure at five cents, so it should be pretty.
It was around ten dollars at five cents, I think.
Is that what it was?
About seven dollars.
About seven dollars, in, in the cold months.
In the cold months.
But, to me, that's if their house is well insulated, they've got an up-to-date furnace, that's not the renter whose landlord hasn't insulated their house well, who's using an older furnace. It's the lower income people are the ones that are, are taking a big hit, when they're only a third of the people that actually use the gas, you know, we're looking at, I, I mean, for me, I think you could, you could tier it, like, hey, in winter months, up to this much, much is a, is a certain rate, and then over that is another rate, and over that is another rate, because you know, when businesses are using a vast majority of that gas, and, and some may be responsible and some may not be, that's, that whole thing impacts the, the, for me, anyway, the, the people who are already strained month to month. And when they had, you know, a twenty-five dollar a month increase a year and a half ago, and now we're saying, hey, you know, in the next year, we're gonna give you another twenty dollar a month increase. That's if your average, if your house isn't well insulated, or if you have an older furnace, or everything's gas, it's going to be more than that.
I, I like that idea, Alan, that the tier approach.
Another, another thing that just came to my fore, question, is, are we talking just residential? Or are we talking residential and business? Because there's some fairly large users in town that may have an issue with this.
We have a, we, the city of Fulton always had, has had a flat rate across the board for, on the natural gas system, that goes towards residential, commercial, and industrial. So, answering your question, it would be across-the-board raise.
Okay.
So how could we tier that?
Okay, just really quickly, getting back to the motion that we have on the floor.
Okay.
So, Mr. Johnson, you said we're getting too close for it to go into effect in August?
I think so.
You think September is more appropriate? Councilman Washington, are you okay with se- amending your motion to say September, is that okay?
I'll amend my motion to September, it's the.
To keep it simple, I'm just gonna say you're good with that, and Councilwoman Reckle, are you okay with that? Okay, so the motion we have on the floor is three and a half cents in September, with the September billing, and then an additional three and a half cents in April.
Thank you, Courtney. So, yeah, that's, yeah. We've got, like, like you guys are saying, we do have time, and, you know, whatever we decide tonight can be adjusted or amended as we go forward, if we find out more about some of this COVID money, and, I don't know, I, I don't think it's wrong to, to start trying to, to move towards repaying that, but I don't think it's wrong to, to wait either, I just don't, I don't know, that, that either way we go is gonna be right or wrong, but.
Well, if we get the COVID money, and we find out that we can allocate some funding from other departments to this, we can always go back and reduce the rates.
Bring it back.
The issue with that is, very rarely will we ever go back in and reduce a rate. It doesn't happen on anything else in life. Gas prices, what do they do, they go up a little bit, then they, they go up ten cents at the pump, and they come down five. They go up ten, come down five, they stair-step us up and continue to stair-step us, month after month and month, in and out, so.
And while.
That's, that's where.
And while we might benefit from that, from our budget and our reserve items, the customers will never, they'll never regain that money that they spent in that time that we raised it, not knowing what we were looking at. I, I said it last time also, I'm fully supportive of us looking at the utility and making sure we're covering our costs. And if a twelve thousand dollar margin on a three million dollar budget is, is not enough and not appropriate, then let's look at that. But to react on this, and to do a rate increase, to make payments on a loan, that the money is sitting in the bank, and will still be sitting in the bank there almost a year from now, I think we have the luxury of time.
And just to, to sort of tie the bow a little bit, if, if that's the case, it, are we okay, if we don't increase, if we don't do anything, are we fulfilling our obligation that we do have the plan in place to repay that loan?
I, I go back to what we talked about, when we first talked about it, and that was, we do not need to increase rates to create a revenue stream to pay for the loan.
But do we, but do we have to have some sort of revenue stream that we're saying is in place, is that, is that what they're asking for?
And I would agree, Mr. Mayor, we need to ver- we need to confirm that, if, if someone has reread the terms of the loan, and the terms of the loan have, are different than what we all assumed going into it, then, then that would be something we need to, to validate.
I, I don't remember that part of it, I know it was, I think we said, do we need to do a rate increase, and I don't know that we really felt like we needed to do one right away, but.
My apologies, Mr. West, I'm saying, go back to the term, how we view the loan now.
Sure, I know what you're saying, right.
What does the loan say, if it says we have to have, if it simply says we have to have a plan for repayment, we've got that. If it's saying we have to have a revenue. stream created to repay it, then that's a different.
I can, I can read it exact, word for word.
Please.
The applicant will establish a dedicated source of revenue for repayment of the loan, either from rates, fees, and charges for the use and services furnished by or through its relate, related utility system, or if the applicant is a municipal utility commission from the revenues of the commission.
From the revenues of the what? Or commission?
Could you read that one more time, I'm sorry?
The applicant will establish a dedicated source of revenue for repayment of the loan, either from rates, fees, and charges for the use and services furnished by or through its related utility system, or if the applicant is a municipal utility commission from the revenues of the commission.
So that last sentence, or if the, if the municipality, what now?
Utility commission.
And we're not one.
We're not.
So we, we are following that first part, yeah?
So you need to have a plan.
So then are we in?
I originally, and, and part of the reason why I seem to remember no increase was, I originally was not for, in any way, shape, or form, for the loan, I did not agree with it, and when, when we talked about it, we specifically talked about how we would use the loan money to repay the loan, and I said, okay, I can go along with that, I can accept that, but, I guess, I go back and find exactly where it was if I need to, and that's okay, I'd be happy to do that.
I remember that too, John, but what I'm saying is, I think there's, and you guys are gonna be surprised by my vote, but, um, we still had to be able to replenish that's, that's gonna, money's gonna go away, we need to have something in, when that three years, five years, pardon me, five years is up, you know?
We, we also, we also talked about it, took us ten years to get there, there, I mean, there was a lot of discussion that went on, and, and, and how long it took to get there, and now we're just trying to do it today.
I do remember that.
I don't think we're trying to do it today, that's why we're, that, no, I don't think so, because that's why we're looking at the, at only a small increase right now. We took the loan to establish a reserve of something, so we don't hammer our citizens if something were to happen, the problem is, right now, if we need to delve into this reserve, now we don't have the money to pay it back.
And I think another thing that we need to think about too is, is if that cold snap had gone on for another week or two weeks, we wouldn't be talking about three or four million, we'd be talking about twenty million, what if that happened, you know, or is this conversation even matter?
So we.
So, I mean, we can't prepare for everything, guys.
No, no, I, I would agree, so we, since I've been on this council, I have seen many situations where we have needed several, several, several hundred thousand dollars to cover a project that was not in the budget, and dollars are there to find it, now is it a matter of us as the council not having a tight enough grip and knowing the budget well enough, I, I would take responsibility on part of that, but also I will say that, do we just need to tighten the budget up some, and that's my last comment on it all.
Mr. Mayor, we'd like to make one more comment, I, I feel we may actually need to table the discussion at this point, because we do need to clarify this statement.
I'm not sure I disagree with you, I kinda feel that way too.
Again, we've, we've heard it read, and I've, I've read it myself, this states that a dedicated source of revenue has to be established, not just that a plan of repayment has to be established.
Yeah, I don't understand it either.
If, if we truly have to create a dedicated revenue stream that repays this loan, then that, that's, that changes the flavor of our discussion. I mean, it does, it gets us to where we're saying, the five cents and the five cents, and it, but that, it changes the reason why we have to do it, not just that we want to do it, but that we have to do it, and so if, which, we wouldn't really have a choice, it's, there's not really gonna be a choice there or a discussion, if that's truly how this is meant to read, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, I, I agree with you.
So.
I think we could, we could table it and bring it back.
I'd, I'd like to move that we table the current discussion until we clarify with the state of Missouri what this statement means.
Second. What, what do you see the options of it meaning being?
We might not have an option, if, they might say you have to come up with a revenue stream that gives you six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars a year for the next five years.
So the way this is interpreted, excuse me, the way this is interpreted, that, the way I, okay, if we have to have some type of plan, so that, that right there isn't because we want.
It's not necessarily plan, it, it's a stream.
And, and that's, that's the word that I'm splitting the hairs on, Mr. Clue, is we have a plan to repay this, but if, but if we have to have a dedicated revenue stream, meaning we have to raise a rate, we have to do something that brings in additional revenue at the amount of the repayment, that changes our entire discussion.
All right, so we have a motion on the table to table this until we get further clarification.
Is there any more discussion on that motion?
I'd, I'd like an understanding of the tabling, do we table it till the next meeting?
Yes.
So it will go on the next agenda. It will go on the next agenda, we'll make sure that we get some sort of legal clarification on that phrasing, and then this will come back again, we'll take it off the table if that is appropriate at that time, and then, uh, Councilman Washington's motion will then be back forward for discussion.
I'll second.
Yeah, we don't need that, but I appreciate it.
You're about the third second now.
Because, because we may have to raise rates by ten cents, starting in September.
I may not get to vote on it, it may be a requirement.
Right, it may be a requirement.
Let's, uh, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Not sure if I'm out of line here, but I like what Ms., Mr. Combs said about looking at a tiered approach too, so I'd really like that to be discussed and brought back to us for next time, and I'm not sure how I would come up with that either, but, I have an eye, I have a thought on it, but, I mean, we're paying so much for the gas that we buy, right, so let's have margin there, and then the, the stuff we buy in the future, right, so maybe we can go there.
Good thing we're good to, I believe, yes.
All right, so we have a motion on the, on the floor, if we're ready to vote on that.
Any other questions, discussion, all of those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Which motion are we voting on?
I'm sorry, the motion would be to table this to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, sorry, all of those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? All right, a lot of work there for nothing, so.
Thank you.
It's all process.
It's all process.
One step forward, two steps back.
Yeah.
We'll get there.
It's all process.
The ten cents haven't nickled back.
New business?
Then we have to.
Cause we need to take five minutes?
Yeah, absolutely, we'll take five, guys.
Okay, well. Enter back into session here, we'll kick off our news business. We did discuss our plan of protective services fee proposals earlier. It's back on the agenda again to continue that discussion. Was there any other unresolved questions on that?
Oh, Dennis.
I think Dennis, you kind of feel like you got some guidance a little bit on that pretty well?
The only thing, did we get to the, we didn't get to the back page to animal control, right?
I think there were no proposed changes.
I don't think you were here that, yeah, that night, but I talked with Tina, Animal Control Supervisor, and we feel that we're adopting cats and dogs out right now at those fees, we're covering our costs there, plus a little bit, so our recommendation is to just leave those fees where they are. And the puppy for parole is working good on getting dogs adopted, we are adopting cats out now, so it's working right now, so we'd like to leave those where they're at.
How many dogs do we have right now that be training in the?
Oh, I, I'm gonna say between ten and twenty that are over there.
Is that about what we have?
Yeah, it's because it varies, because, I mean, when they go over there, we don't know how long they're gonna be training, and then they get, they take care of the adoption, and then the money gets sent back to us.
Gets back to us, yeah, okay. And then the, the ones that are training, these are inmates?
The offenders, inmates.
It's working very well, isn't it?
Yes, very well.
Thank you, good.
Madam Clerk, what's the, what's the official process for those fees underneath Dennis's?
So some of them, like I said earlier, they are gonna require a code change in ordinance. I'm gonna look through, now that we've actually reviewed them, I'm gonna look through each specific item and see what we need to bring back to as an ordinance, and what we can bring back just kind of as a proposal. Eventually, once we have all of these fees together, even though we might pass some of them ahead of time, they're gonna be compiled into one whole document that you guys will review one final time, just to make sure that you're happy with everything. So it's quite possible at our next meeting, based on your discussions earlier, you might need more notice.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Thank you Dennis for being, putting all the work in this.
Goodness.
Yep, thank you.
A lot of, a lot of effort went into this, appreciate that. Okay, moving on, we'll discuss our alcohol at Directplex. We've kind of got a proposal here in front of us tonight.
Yeah, this is a, this is a proposal we came, come up with about two months ago. It basically allows for renters to bring in alcohol for consumption, or they could bring in a licensed caterer to have them sell or serve alcohol. The city would possess a consumption license through the state that would allow alcohol to be consumed on, on the premises. We would not purchase any licenses that would allow us to sell alcohol. And we would basically only allow alcohol in the banquet room and the outside patio. So that's kind of what we're looking at, we're, we're open to suggestions or changes.
Are we gonna charge like a corkage fee, or a per can charge, or wine bottle charge, or?
We, we are not, that's not, that's not built into our, our fees, right now.
Did you guys pull this policy from a different, different city, or did you just make this up?
We've looked at different policies, some from a private, some from cities.
Are, I'm just, I'm focusing on the money, are you gonna charge to let somebody bring in alcohol, at all?
We are not, no, we're charging for the rental of the facility.
Of the facility?
Yeah.
And they would pay one dollar, if they brought their own, they would pay one dollar fee?
Pay one dollar, so if somebody wanted to bring a keg of beer and set it, set it in the corner, for one dollar, they could do that. If they wanted somebody to serve or sell it, they would have to have a licensed caterer.
And this would be for wedding receptions and things like that?
Things like that, yeah.
And then the licensed caterer would have to have the proper licenses, licensing?
Yeah, I believe they call it, there's, I think it's called a caterer's permit for short, and it allows them to serve and sell beer or alcohol off, off premises from their business location.
Clay, two questions, one, is there, is there a specific reason why we're not allowing Sunday sales, even though Missouri state law allows it?
Because it, it's outlined in the consumption license, that it's only allowed Monday through Saturday.
Oh, okay, the consumption license that we would be applying for?
Yes, yeah, that's, that's, the definition of that is listed there at the bottom, and it shows the price and, and the hours that you can, people can consume alcohol.
Thank you, I didn't make that, I didn't make that distinction, thank you.
So we, we as the city of Fulton, or the Directplex, would apply for a consumption liquor license?
Correct.
At sixty dollars a year, but all that does is allow us to allow other people with a liquor license to sell liquor?
That's correct, that's correct.
Or to bring their own?
Yeah.
But that's only in the banquet room?
The license would cover the entire facility, our policy would limit it to the banquet room and the patio area.
Yeah, for the.
So some, somebody watching the kids playing basketball can't bring their little cooler and pay us a dollar drinker?
They cannot.
Sit and exercise and have a beer.
Yeah, yeah, and even a daily visitor couldn't come in and sit in the banquet room and, and have a six pack. It would be only for reservations and rows.
Okay.
Clay, my second question is, when I, when I did this at a different facility, I had to have liability insurance for the use of that event because we were going to be consuming alcohol. Does that, would that, does that need to be considered in here, or was that just something that they?
I, I don't think it applies to the alcohol side of it, I think that's something that the city will need to look at and decide, you know, what type of event, you know, if, if every wedding reception requires liability insurance, that's gonna limit the number of people that run our facility. So I, I think that's something Robert and I have to talk about and, and discuss the insurance side of it a little bit.
Okay, and I knew we hadn't made that requirement as yet, but I just remembered because of the alcohol consumption, it changed the liability insurance that I had to take out at the other facility, so.
I, I will check into that some more, yeah.
Thank you.
I will say, oh, go ahead, Val.
About two thirds of the way down, we have under the age of twenty-one, and then the City of Fulton BBA?
Doing business as.
What?
Doing business as.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So Jeff, back to your, back to your point, I do, I, when my daughter got married, and granted it was in St. Charles, but we did not have to have any kind of liability insurance, and I can tell you that there was enough alcohol that was consumed.
Yeah.
I will say Westminster, just from my experience, that is a requirement, and I do think that's something we might want to consider, just because that is pretty standard with any kind of rental, especially for a reception, anytime you have alcohol that's consumed, you might want to have some sort of liability coverage from people renting.
Something to get in there, definitely.
But that wouldn't necessarily be something, that would be on the building itself?
It would be, yeah, it would be on the premises, and, and I will say it's not always contingent upon there being alcohol, it's usually part of your reservation, so in my experience, it was a requirement of our reservation.
When somebody rents the banquet room, are the, are the doors locked to the rest of the facility?
They are, yes, yeah. If it was during the day, if there was maybe, let's say a business meeting, or some, something like that, they could be unlocked. But if it's after hours, you know, if the event goes on till midnight, the rest of the facility will be secured.
Clay, what sort of license do we have at the golf course?
Right now, we currently have a license to sell beer, wine, and liquor. And we, we have a state, a county, and a city license for, for those.
Okay, so is there any reason why we wouldn't want to do that here? And I'm not saying that I am, but I'm just.
I think the cost, I don't think the, I don't think we generate enough revenue. You know, maybe we get down the road, that might be an option. And you also gotta find people to serve it to, you gotta find, you know, if you go into the, the liquor side of it, you gotta, you gotta find people that have experience in that, so that, that becomes a challenge, and, and I think it increases our liability.
I'm not proposing that we do, I'm just asking a question.
I think that's maybe down the road, if, if there's some benefit to it, but right now, I think the costs outweigh the revenue.
Okay.
And potential for problems there too, you have primarily young folks working there.
Right.
Maybe not always the best.
Exactly.
Not this time.
Mix there, so it sounds like you're gonna meet with Robert and talk about how that may work.
We can do that.
Very good, all right.
Is the council okay with this as the liquor, alcohol policy? If we get the insurance thing figured out? One answer, no?
I'm not sure a dollar's enough.
I think regardless, we should definitely have a vote.
I want, yeah, I want the, I want council to say yea or nay on this.
I move to accept the proposed alcohol policy for the Legends Directplex as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
I would like to, I would like to mill it around a little bit more and really think about it, rather than it showed up on our desk today, and then you're asking me to vote on something tonight.
I, I agree with you, John, I don't like stuff just thrown at us at, at the night of.
And I'm sorry, Clay, to do that, but I mean.
And I don't, I don't necessarily like throwing it at you, yeah, I mean.
Is it something?
Make a motion to table until the next.
I think the discussion Courtney and Bill and I had was, was middle to late of last week, and I don't think we had time to get it on.
Wasn't purposely thrown at us at the last second.
Is it something you feel you need the park board to take a look at, or you don't think this requires their oversight? What do you think?
We could, but I mean, I, I think it's something I think the council would be okay with, I think the park board would be okay with.
Is there some reason that you would need this passed, or something?
No, I think between now and the next meeting, we, we don't have any current reservations. Yeah, I think.
Madam Clerk, may I simply withdraw my motion?
You certainly can.
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you, Councilman Simmons, you withdraw your second.
Well, seeing how the motion's withdrawn.
No, you had to, you had to withdraw the second first, actually.
Can we also look into charging a fee for anybody that's going to do alcohol? Like, if you're, if you're having an event and you are going to bring in alcohol, there's a fifty dollar charge to be able to bring that in.
Well, I kind of assumed that it was sixty dollars.
Obviously, it's seventy bucks.
That's our, that's what we had to pay.
That's our state license, that's our state license, whatever it costs.
You know, I'm just throwing something out, it doesn't have to be fifty dollars, you know, but something to.
To offset maybe the extra cleanup or extra issues and my view associated with alcohol.
Exactly, exactly, you know, you have drunk people, and it adds a whole new level of breaking stuff and cleaning up, and I think that they need to be paying a fee, and I'm not saying make it huge, but.
Well.
For allowing this.
As an example, if somebody wants to rent it for two hundred dollars, and they're just gonna have cake and punch and stuff, versus.
Beer and wine, yeah.
So this is the flat fee, if you want alcohol, it's this much.
Exactly.
Well, I, I like the idea of pursuing the liability insur, I had to get a million dollar liability policy in an event center because we were having alcohol. I only had to get like two hundred and fifty thousand, and then when we were going to have alcohol, provided it was gonna be a million dollars, so I like that liability insurance going on to the, the person.
I think so too, I think we have to look into the liability, yeah, liability, but I think we should do both.
But yeah, we can do both, too.
Require that they carry liability and charge them a fee to bring in the liquor.
Yeah, and then we'll be able to put more glass in the glass recycle bin, too.
That's a stipulation too, Clay. The doll, the dollar fee, when would that be invoked?
The, the alcohol permit fees are required for any kind of park reservation that you have. I, later on, when we get to my fees, I'm gonna be proposing that we increase that a little bit, it's not really what the paper we printed on.
Yeah, a dollar's not very much.
Right, but that's essentially just for an alcohol permit, anytime you're on city property where alcohol's allowed. Those are required.
I don't think ten dollars would even be unreasonable. I don't want to have this discussion in a year, hey, this isn't enough, you know?
Gotcha, all right.
Yeah.
So we, we, we do have a motion in a second on the floor.
They actually don't?
Oh, no, it got withdrawn.
We would, we drew it.
Yeah, my bad, my bad.
Do over.
So, yeah, we don't have to.
So we can bring this, we don't even really have to table it, we can bring this back at the next meeting.
All right, council concerns?
I'll start with Mr. West.
It's her turn, but I have nothing.
Is it your turn? I'm so sorry, ladies first.
I don't have any concerns, but I do want to say that I've noticed, you know, our city workers out working, they're doing a great job, I've also noticed that our rideaways are mowed, which I really appreciate as a short person, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Very good, yeah, absolutely.
It's had tons of rain, and it just really is important to mow when you're coming out of it, and it's been done, and I appreciate it.
There's a couple of blind spots that got done too, so thank you, I don't know how that happened, I probably don't want to know, but it happened, so that's a good thing. All right, Councilman Washington?
Oh, I want to publicly thank the Police Department, Chief Myers and his staff, and the Fire Department is, was part of that of the July fourth, it seemed to went off. I walked to the park and talked to some of the people, and it's, it looked like we had people in their little pods, and they were just mingling and enjoying themselves, and so I, I almost say it was perfect, but we didn't have what we thought could happen, happen, so, so I want to thank the chief and the staff that took the time to, and I had a chance to talk with some of them, so outstanding job, and also the city workers. And at our church, we had some, we had a water leak, and they called, called the emergency number, they came right out and checked to make sure I didn't have a leak or any, a water leak, it was kind of ground soft water, we found that out, so I appreciate them helping out in that situation, so. Thanks to the city crew and everybody else, thank you, that's it.
Absolutely, Councilman Coles?
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Braun?
Good tonight, thank you.
Councilman, uh, Sal?
I just want to thank Mike for continuing to stream us Facebook Live, and I've, I've gotten a couple of comments that, you know, they can't hear us because it doesn't come through the microphone like it does when we're streaming through our, our normal AV equipment, so thank you to everybody who's continuing to follow us on Facebook Live and streaming to hear us. And then just a reminder, as the mayor said, this will be recorded and made available at a later date. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman, please.
Nothing this evening.
Councilman Simmons?
No, I haven't.
Councilman West?
I have nothing tonight.
All right, we'll move on to resolutions, Councilman West, if you would, present Resolution thirty-four fourteen.
All right, Resolution number thirty-four fourteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Guardian Environmental Services LLC for asbestos inspection service related to the Community Development Block Grant Residential Demolition Project for the City of Fulton, Missouri, I move for adoption of Resolution number thirty-four fourteen at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. And this is Dennis, just part of the process here?
Yes, part of the, basic process.
Gotcha, any questions on this or discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? All right, we'll move on to Resolution thirty-four fifteen, Councilman Simmons, if you would.
Yes, sir, Resolution number thirty-four fifteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission to complete the environmental review on the Community Development Lot Grant Residual Demolition Project for the City of Fulton, I make a motion that we approve Resolution thirty-four fifteen at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, again, this is part of that same process, this will cover the, the ground, or?
Environmental review.
Environmental, environmental.
Residual of the community, okay. It's all tied to the grant, though, any other, any questions or other discussion?
And, and this is kind of a two-part, I didn't get it in on the, so we're looking at really our out-of-pocket expense of about twenty-three, five, Dennis, is our out-of-pocket expense on, on both of these? So nineteen, nineteen to twenty-eight?
That, that will be the asbestos testing of each individual house.
And the forty-four reports that are being written.
And the four thousand will be paying Mid-Missouri Regional Planning to do the environmental assessment.
Okay.
All righty, any other questions? Right there, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? All right, Councilman Braun, if you would, Resolution thirty-four sixteen?
Resolution thirty-four sixteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relationship to a contract with Christianson Construction Company of Kingdom City, Missouri, for the Tenth Street Coal Milling and Asphalt Overlay Project, I make a motion to pass Resolution thirty-four sixteen at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, and we might just get a quick update on where we're at on that project. Kyle? Sorry to spring it on you, but it seemed like maybe some of this groundwork is done, or underground work is done.
Yeah, we've, we've got the contractor, Mike Ecton, in town, he's the contractor, that's, that's charged with putting the curb, new curb and gutter, and driveway approaches and sidewalk in, so. He's, he's readying himself to lay a curb on that, on the south side of that road, starting tomorrow, so. Hopefully, hopefully rain will give us a break a little bit, you know, the rain over the weekend did, did mess us up a little bit and, and kind of set us back a day or so this week. We had some pipe that had to be reworked, and, and some rock that had to be reworked today, and, and the guys had to work a little overtime to get that done, so hopefully we don't, well, two, so we don't set the contractor further behind, because school's coming, right? So, yeah, with that, this is kind of the last piece of the puzzle, this asphalt bit is the last piece of the puzzle on that road, so. Christianson, we've obviously worked with him many times, and does a good job for us, and he knows our time constraints, and, and is hoping that, that Mike can get his job done, so, so Tom can do his.
Appreciate the update.
Do we expect that we'll have this finished before school starts?
That's the plan. I still, I still feel optimistic, we need, we need Mother Nature to cooperate, but we still have enough time to.
How many days of cushion do we have, do you think, right now?
I wouldn't give it any.
So rain delays could really impact us. Thank you.
All righty, any other discussion on that? All right, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Opposed, no? Moving on, resolution thirty-four seventeen, if you would, Councilman Coles?
Uh, resolution number thirty-four seventeen. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to make application and sign all necessary documents in relation to the body worn camera policy and implementation program to support law enforcement agencies grant through the Department of Justice. And I make a motion to adopt resolution number thirty-four seventeen at this council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. And this is just to update our fleet of cameras, I guess. The ones we have are probably aged out or getting close to it.
Yes. We'll get thirty-six brand new ones, cost of $48,000. Grant's going to pay half. We'll be, our responsibility will be twenty-four thousand.
Any questions? Discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Resolution thirty-four eighteen, if you would, Mr. Washington.
Resolution thirty-four and eighteen. Resolution approving a project of the industrial development authority of Callaway County, Missouri for Westminster College located in the city of Fulton, Missouri. I make a motion that we move this thirty-four eighteen to our next council meeting.
Really quickly, just to clarify, so it is a resolution. Did you mean to pass it at tonight's meeting?
Pass, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you to pass it at tonight's meeting.
I just know they've been waiting very patiently.
We could bump this further down the program.
Second.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Who wants to lead this?
Don, don't want you to come up?
I hope it's all pageant.
President Lofe.
Yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for having the, taking the time to review and consider our proposal resolution. This is for a refunding bond of eleven million dollars and an additional bond issue for three million dollars, what's called new funds, for the renovation and also patio repair of the museum and the churchill, and the church itself. This is very similar to an issue that the council approved two thousand and seven. And the primary reason we come before you this evening is for two reasons. One, this is the county seat of Callaway. This is industrial development authority bond issue. And the most prevalent reason is because this is a new construction project which will involve permits from the city and other types of matters filed to this, to the city. This resolution does not bind the city of any liability or any type of other issue relative to the project and basically authorizes and approves the industrial authority to move forward with the issuance of the bonds in accordance with what's called chapter three forty-nine. What that says in English basically is this is the industrial development authority and the project meets those requirements. Have to do any questions. My colleagues, Chief Financial Officer.
Yes, who?
And Tim Riley, curator of museum.
All right. Thank you, President.
Thank you very much.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any questions on this or discussion? It sounds like just being a good neighbor to help support this cause. We're at no risk for it, so. All right, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Very good.
Thanks for your patience.
Yes, thank you.
Is there anything else going on at the college that you'd like to share with us while you're here? We don't get the president in our chambers that often.
Absolutely.
Yes, it is. We, we're going to begin, the students come back on August fourteenth and we're looking forward this year to a higher enrollment for the new class than we had last year. We're in the process of working through our COVID plans as we speak. We will employ various measures for distancing in the classrooms, but again, we intend to hold primarily in-class academic courses. If there is a need for Zoom or some type of hybrid fashion, we'll continue to pursue that. In addition, the athletic programs right now, we believe will be in full swing for the entire year. At least that's the message we're getting from the NCA and the respective conferences. So again, we look forward to that. And, you know, as far as this, this bond issue, again, I know I really appreciate the opportunity in passing that, but this is something very important to the institution and this will begin to move this forward. And I'd like Tim just to say one, one point about the opening. We did a soft opening of the museum on July first and Tim, you might want to say a few words with respect to what we're going to call the more significant opening. So we're very pleased of where we stand right now as an institution and I can tell you on behalf of my wife, Mike, we're very pleased to be here in the city. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
President Lofe is an alumnus of Westminster College, so welcome back and we're really glad to have you. The museum itself, the, the museum itself, as President Lofe mentioned, has experienced a soft opening, which means we are open to the public as of July one. Quietly, we haven't made fanfare or headlines about it, but we are open to the public to get used to some of the new systems, new procedures that we have in place in the museum. So those who have you, who have guests coming in from town who have been disappointed for sixteen months that they can't see the museum, please send them our way. We'll be delighted to have them. We are doing a public opening, a grand reopening on July twenty-ninth at Friday at eleven AM. Governor Parson will be with us to help us reopen the museum with some fanfare. So that is really the big public opening the next day, Saturday, the thirtieth. We'll have an ice cream social in the new plaza to the west of the museum. You will all receive invitations. I hope you can come and celebrate this, this new reopening of a wonderful museum and see some of the new improvements we've made, both inside and outside the museum, and an exciting new acquisition, which we hope to tell you more about at the end of the month. So we're going to thank you for your support in helping us to make some of the improvements in the street along Seventh Street during the closure. We, we're busier than ever and we very much look forward to opening and welcoming back tourists to our fine city. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our second readings tonight, we have bill number sixteen nineteen. Councilwoman Lofe, if you would.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to do second and third reading at this meeting. Bill number sixteen nineteen, in ordinance, amending chapter ninety-four, solid waste, article four, storage, collection, and disposal, Fulton City Code by repealing certain sections of division three services charges and enacting a new section in there of thereof. I make a motion for bill number sixteen nineteen to be read for the third reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any, uh, discussion on this? We did hear it last meeting and discussed it some.
And, and I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was.
No, absolutely.
I was not here the last meeting, but I, after looking back and looking at it, this was just for commercial customers, correct?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? And if you would again.
Yes, bill number sixteen nineteen, in ordinance, amending chapter ninety-four, solid waste, article four, storage, collection, excuse me, and disposal, Fulton City Code by repealing certain sections of division three services charges and enacting new sections in there of, therefore, I make a motion for bill number sixteen nineteen to be considered for the third reading and passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? You've all heard the bill read three times. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you would, take roll call for final vote.
All right, Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
And Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
All righty, thank you all. And bill number sixteen twenty, if you would, Councilman Simmons?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number sixteen twenty, in ordinance authorizing amendments to the city of Fulton budget for fiscal year 2020 as outlined by article eight, financial procedures, section eight dot eight, amendments after adoption, paragraph C, transfer of appropriations, Fulton City Charter and establishing effective date. I move that we, I make a motion that we move bill number sixteen twenty for third and final reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to move this on for third reading tonight. Any discussion? Questions?
I, I just have one. And, and it's unfortunate that Kathy can't be here, so maybe the conversation, maybe Bill can't. So if we're moving money, obviously the 2020 budget is ended. How does that money, and where does it, how does it go to 2021 and where does it show up in our budget? We did our budget prior to this, saying whether there's pluses or minuses. So where does that money, where does it go?
I don't quite understand the question, but you, you are only required to approve a budget amendment for funds that spent more than is requested, okay? There may very well be, may very well have been offsetting revenues that covered all of those expenditures. If, I don't have the form, I don't have it in front of me, but we were, we were well into the black at the end of the year. So the, the city made money, okay? Now we're just going back in, but in order for the money to be spent, it requires city council approval.
But where does it show up in the budget?
It showed up in the audit.
In, in the audit?
It does not show up in the budget.
Audited amount, okay.
It does not show up in the budget.
Okay, but, but those dollars.
But now the, 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 it will show up in the 2022 budget as a 2020 expenditure. In a, in a, in the past years, as you make comparisons, we do three years past, it will show up as a 2020 expenditure. Because the numbers, most of the, a lot of the numbers from the, that will be in the 2022 budget come from the 2020 audit. So if you look on the, on, in the budget, this year, the 2022, it'll say 2020 audited, okay? It'll say 2021 budgeted. Because we, that hasn't been audited.
Correct. So it will actually show in 2022?
In the budget as having been spent and approved in 2020.
Or in this case, there's an overage, because we were in the black. Where would it go?
That would be, that would be.
How would it show up? If you're in the black, it, it, in my mind, it's got to show up somewhere.
It'll show up, it'll show up in those cash reserves. It'll show up in some, like the, the positive side of it will show up in the cash reserve.
Okay, okay. And that black number was?
I don't remember off the top of my head. It was last year, last month, last council meeting.
Thank you.
It's like the first sentence. Every year we lead with that as being like the first sentence. We had a good year, we ended up.
Two hundred to the good or whatever.
Fortunately, unfortunately, I couldn't find, and, and then I had one of my wonderful fellow council members explain to me how to find the council meeting from last month that I missed because I couldn't find it. So he's.
On the website.
Without the website, but yeah. So I have, I have, I was not able to watch, but thank you. I appreciate that.
All righty. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? And if you would again, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number sixteen twenty, in ordinance authorizing amendments to the city of Fulton budget for fiscal year 2020 as outlined by article eight, financial procedures, section eight dot eight, amendments after adoption, paragraph C, transfer of appropriations, Fulton City Charter and establishing an effective date. I move bill number sixteen twenty for final passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Are you done? All those in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed, no? You've all heard the bill read three times. At this time, Madam Clerk, you take roll call for final vote.
All right, Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
And Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
All right, eight council members affirmative.
All right, bill sixteen twenty passes. Announcements, our next meeting will be held here Tuesday, July twenty-seventh at six thirty. That's all the announcements I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. First of all, I'm going to apologize, ladies and gentlemen. We have a, a new citizen who's come to sit in on the meeting tonight and learn to get more involved and he just knew our city. So I'd like to welcome him. And I'm sorry, your name again, sir?
Corey Shalwell.
Thank you, Corey.
Corey, welcome to the committee. And thank you for, for asking. We were both kind of, who is that guy?
We're not used to having people here.
Yeah, it's an exciting night for us, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Very good. I will entertain a motion. Oh, do we have some?
Mr. Mayor and Madam Clerk, did we send our regards to the regional MML, letting them know we would not be in attendance?
We did not, we just have not read this through.
Okay.
I move for.
But maybe we can do that.
Maybe we could.
Is that a suggestion?
I'd like to suggest that we, it, since it's the first regional meeting in over a year, I, I think we could at least acknowledge that we're not going to be there.
Good idea. Simple phone call can go a long ways sometimes.
I move to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Thank you all.